Hey, I'm here, sorry. A little late.
Well, you were a minute late.
We are live and we are recording, so you're welcome to start.
Hey, excellent. Move over to my agenda. How did that finish? Okay, the time is six o'clock at September twenty-third and the year 2020, and I'd like to call the Vineyard City Council to order. John is going to give us an invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And actually just say the Pledge of Allegiance while we observe him.
Okay, I'll start, okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, we are grateful to be gathered as a community, as citizens, as members of hanging will help continue this city on a course that will allow it to be successful and a wonderful place for a diverse amount of people to live and experience life, family, and joy. In the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen, thank you so much. We'll go ahead and move to our public comments. Those of you wishing to speak, please raise your hand in the chat and I will look for your comments. If you want to write it in the chat, we can also read them off of that. Pam, do you or Jake have any comments that we need to read?
Cannot see anything. I have not received any for this portion. I do have some for the public hearing though, later.
Okay.
Yeah, I have the same way too.
Okay. I'm looking at the chat and I don't see anything in the chat. If anybody sees something, please let me know. Otherwise, I will move to our next.
Uh, look Julie, it looks like Amber Raffelson has something that she'd like to ask.
Okay, great. Amber, did you want to speak? Or would you like to?
Yes, I'd like to speak.
Go ahead Amber.
I tried to be brief. I'm gonna use my camera for a minute. Tyce, this is for you mostly, because I don't know how to find who means otherwise. I've been typing and I'll have to get on the agenda till next. But I kinda wanted to let you know what I've been doing. So I'm trying to really fast. Uh, I think I found them the scientific names of plants, which is really important because some of these are multiple types. I think it can be kinda hard to keep track about without scientific names. I have written up a uniform list for the first sections of the manual that lists out all their features in the same order so that it's easy for you to go from tree to tree or plant to plant to see what their water requirements and things are. I've put in a lot of work on it, but I haven't finished it because there's been some I guess people are unsure about what changes are gonna be implemented and how that could be done. So I just wanted to let you know whatever I know. Then if I should proceed or you can email me to let me know. If you're gonna take it from there, I'll give my grammar edits to Brian on Friday. Because I have also edited that, so.
Hey, thank you Amber, Tyce, is that good?
Yeah, this is great. Amber, the only thing that I'm feeling was right now is I have a timeline in order to qualify for the grant. So I've gotta get that thing in.
What does it do? Because Pam said if I got it to you this week, I'd give you time to review it. But if you want.
I have to have all the information to get it to ladies in the thirty first of October.
Can't be to send you what I have and you can look at it and see what you see?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Can I add some real quick?
Yes.
So, Amber, one of the changes in there will provide this city engineer the ability to make edits. As long as they're not changing, like adding more restrictions to properties. So I think a lot of what you're adding is really awesome, but we maybe even be able to do a lot of that just through an administrative approval for the city engineer. But that was just an idea, so I think we instill into timelines. You know, as long as we're not doing a substantial change, right? When I say that, I mean like adding regulations that aren't in that habit. Or putting scientific names in and adding more tree types. Those are things that we can do on administrative level once the resolution is passed. So just an idea, so that would buy you some more time, just you know, no rush.
The only reason I'm trying to read is I know someone who said that I don't recognize what development. I just wanna be sure that they don't go wrong and then say, well, that wasn't clear in the tree manual. I just wanna make sure that the city's protected, but if you think it's adequate at this point, I won't rush it.
Yeah, no, I think we can take all your changes, we could, let's look at it, but I'm just saying that the, how it's being approved, we can do that through the administrative process. So you don't need to, you know, worry too much about getting, you know, meeting that timeframe. Unless if it's a really big substantial change, then you would have to go to council. It sounds like most of your changes are just adding, you know, good value and information. So I think that can be done administrative once the resolutions happen.
And from what you've said, I'm fine with your addition of changes. I just know that Brian has a limited amount of time to get it done. So we can get it to Pam and get it on the agenda.
He does, and I've tried to do the bulk of the work for him because that's my background and so it's a lot easier for me, but it's still time consuming, so.
Right, I understand. So either way, I think we're a little happy to meet your requirements that you're putting in there. Basically, work this part. Let's just get it through this now and then we'll use the methods that we've provided to make it easy to add those things in.
Okay. Thank you Amber, thank you for your work on that. Thanks for the notifications. Is, are there any other public comments that need to be addressed? Okay, I don't see any hands raised, so I'm going to go ahead and move to the next section. And this is the Mayor and Councilmember Reports and Disclosures. Are there any councilmembers that have anything to report?
Mayor, I have the late revision, but I will give them those to Pam and see what they can do. The report.
Okay. John, did you wanna give any updates on the emergency management?
Um, yeah, I was just pulling up an email right now, the most recent one from the emergency management group. Let me, let me pull that up here real quick. And we can kind of talk about basically, the update that I received, it was yesterday. The main update is, I think everyone's familiar with the roller coaster called COVID. So I don't know that there's a whole lot to add there, you know, that, that people aren't already kind of aware of. I was just gonna give a quick update on the fires. The Williams fire is at forty-nine percent contained and we have about two hundred and sixty-seven personnel on scene. The Ether Hollow fire is ninety-three percent contained and the Goshen fire is a hundred percent contained. So the Williams fire is the last fire that is kind of still being managed and mitigated with, with our personnel. And then as far as, as far as updates from, you know, do you want any updates on COVID? I can give you some of the most recent numbers from yesterday if you want.
Maybe just like the generalities since maybe not everybody's following some of the updates. If somebody's following online, maybe I will, if they're reading the minutes.
Okay, then let's look at, from, they didn't give me the Utah County numbers yesterday like they normally do. They gave me the state numbers and as far as the, as far as yesterday went, there were six hundred and fifty new cases is what they put down. And apparently Provo and Orem have accounted for about fifty percent of all of Utah County's COVID cases in the last, I think this is the overall, over a week period of time. And that's what promoted and caused Provo and Orem to move back to an orange, which is a moderate restriction level. And that started this morning at midnight, basically, from my understanding. And so, you know, like I said, that's an ever, ever target, total COVID nineteen deaths for Utah, just Utah, is four hundred and forty-three. Hospitalized in Utah, all of the state of Utah, is a hundred and sixty-one. And the last I saw that put us at about, I think we were near the fifty or sixty percent bed, hospital bed usage. Our hospitals, because that tends to be the thing that most people in the healthcare industry that I speak with are the most worried about. And so far, I've never seen us get above sixty-five, I wanna say, percent of ICU and regular bed COVID usage. I could be a little off on that, but that's, any, anything else Mayor that you'd like me to kind of address on this? As far as the numbers I have here?
Um, no, I think your numbers are all sufficient. During the entire time, the full numbers for Vineyard, I believe there's only been six reported cases for Vineyard, is that right?
Yeah, well, and ultimately, I don't get the Vineyard numbers. I get, and I did find the Utah County numbers. As far as Utah County goes, you know, we've had a total in Utah County of fifty-four deaths in Utah County during the entire process. Not, not recently. I mean, it's been an ongoing cumulative, let's put it that way. So, but no, I don't get a Vineyard breakdown, Mayor. That would be a good thing for me to, to be able to see, but I've never gotten a Vineyard breakdown.
It looks like they just started posting it recently. We had been kind of matched with other portions of the region, which is what you've probably been seeing. This week, I recently requested them additional data because they said they were going to meld our data with that of the states. And what I think we should be asking in those management meetings, when they start reporting ICU increases across the state, I think we really need to understand how many of those patients are being moved from Utah County to any of the other hospitals, because like you said, our ICU percentages have not fluctuated significantly. And it looks like from the numbers I received, there were only two patients, two or three patients that had COVID with comorbidity in the ICU unit this, this last, this last report.
And I actually just, Mayor, I just spotted on this report, the ICU bed usage. So the ICU, current ICU bed usage is at fifty-two percent in the, is at fifty-two percent. And non-ICU bed usage is at forty-one percent. That's just Utah County, that's just here. And so, we are, from a managing, what is the biggest concern which is overwhelming the system? We are, we're still well in range.
Okay. That's great, and then the last thing is just that a mask mandate went in for the county. I think the hope is that they're trying to prevent any more economic closures, but it looks like our businesses are open and all of the businesses within Utah County have really been requiring masks. So I don't think that'll have a large impact on residents. Did you see anything from the reports that said that would impact our residents besides not being able to attend games and things like that?
I, I think, I think you've, I think that's exactly the impact. I mean, personally, it's, we're hearing, we might, might not be able to go to some of the, our boys' football and other games for the next couple of weeks. But in the scheme of things, that's, you know, that's, like I said, that's a part of this COVID roller coaster. And hopefully, we'll move past this, you know, relatively soon is my hope, simply because, you know, I have my opinions on it. But hopefully, we'll move past it and we can kind of get back to some level of business as usual. But yeah, that's the, that's the only thing I've really heard that sounds any different, otherwise it's just masks.
Well, and I think it's just good to say that we are moving into cold and flu season, so to just take that accountability and know that you've got the tools to protect yourself is really important right now. We've increased all the tele services within our community and I know businesses all around us are doing the same thing. So there are resources posted if, if people are experiencing other hardships from, from the pandemic. So that's something to be aware of and you can call the city for help accessing those resources if you don't see them on our sites. Thanks, John. Christie, did you have something that you wanted to report tonight?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Well, Christie and I have been, and I'm not sure about the other councilmembers, but we've had the opportunity to attend some of the league conference today and that'll be going on through the weekend. One of the things that I learned is that since the pandemic, jobs and businesses and people have recognized that they can work remotely. I attended, I attended a conference that talked about how transportation will kind of change and businesses will change because of these new tele services. However, one of the really great things that I learned on the call is that our planning for the town center and our planning for the public access to our shorelines and our connection to higher education really makes us a place where people are more likely to move to live and play as much as they are to work. So what that means is that businesses would be more likely to come here as satellite companies so that they're attracting places where tourism and where their talent really wants to be near to. It's also a closer connection point than having to commute all the way to Salt Lake City or to the Silicon Slopes. We become that next outer edge where smaller corporations can come or larger corporations that need smaller, smaller office space can come and locate within our community. So that was nice to hear. I don't know if you guys wanted to give an update. I know Tyce was there on kind of the lake cleanup that we did. Jake can speak more to it as well, but if you've gotten down to the beach, it looks beautiful and we did a, the request that came in from the residents to see what we could do with five hundred dollars and make a difference in the community. The largest opportunity, the largest request was that we would make a trail down to the lakeshore on Center Street and that was accomplished this past week, so that was exciting to see. Other than that, Jake, do you have anything?
Yeah, the five hundred dollar project even under budget, which is great, ended up being like four hundred dollars. So it was fantastic. We had a lot of good volunteers come out and help and we had a lot of our staff that came out as well, so I just shout out to them. It looks great down there and I heard from Tyce that there were some people actually biking, so. It looks like it's getting access. Just really quick, we have been meeting with Orem City and the engineering department talking about locating the future water tank in Orem and what it would take to kind of change our system so that we're not taking water through the Orem system, distribution system anymore and taking all of the water from the city straight through central Utah water. So we're working on that process with Orem City in conjunction with locating a tank for the future, for the future water tank for the city. So that will, those meetings are happening weekly and we continue to work out any tanks and we'll move that forward. I was sitting on an interview panel for the North Point Special Service District District Manager position and we have offered the position to an applicant. We haven't had an acceptance yet, but we anticipate that coming this week. We did a Facebook Live this morning, Christie was part of that and we did it with Burton Holden and Anthony Jenkins from the Bicycle Advisory Committee. Took them for a little tour and answered some questions about biking in Vineyard and I think it worked pretty well. So that's all I have, if there's any questions from here, I'll answer them.
Anybody have any questions for Jake? Okay. I wanted to briefly mention, we've also been working with the railroad. So just an update and some, an update for the public. We had closed a contract on the spur line removal. And then we received federal dollars that made us incorporate UDOT into the contract and we have been wondering, we've been trying to close that agreement. It's been going very fast. The latest request was from UDOT to update some wording to make it more in compliance with what the federal railroad people need for their, for the grant money. And so that's what we're doing right now, we're working through timelines and just kind of cleaning up the last few things on the contract and hopefully what we'll see is that that will come on to our next city council agenda. So that's really exciting that we've gotten to that, that point. Jake, did you have anything to add on that?
Nope, you know, we're really excited about that project moving forward and being able to coordinate all these groups together has been quite, it's been working, so.
Excellent. Okay, we'll go on and move to our consent items. If there is no discussion needed, I just need an approval for the consent items.
I'll make a motion. Second.
And John will second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. Let's go ahead and move on to the discussion and presentation by our UTA trustee Kent Millington. Kent, are you, do you have a PowerPoint that we can share for you or do you need to share the screen?
No, I don't have anything for you to share, just a quick report on some, some studies that have been, that are moving forward.
Awesome, great to see you here, can't wait to hear about it.
Well, thank you very much for the time. First thing we want to report on is the Vineyard Station, the front runner station. That is moving forward, the, there is a conference, a meeting on October one and October two to finalize the, the costs of that entire project. Not just the station itself there in Vineyard, but the double tracking north of Vineyard as well. But that's, that's coming up in, in a week or, week or two to finalize that, that cost. So then we'll be able to know if there's additional shortfall in the funding that we've received.
That's great.
We've received funding from several sources and we're, we're pretty sure that we're able to move forward. We're looking for a final, final report here coming in the first part of October.
That's great, Council, do you have any questions about that? Or Jake, do you have any questions? No, okay.
All right, so that's one project. The other project that directly impacts Vineyard is the Central Corridor Study. Central Corridor Study is looking at creating a bus rapid transit system that will run basically down State Street from, from the Provo front runner station up to Lehigh. That study has been going on for about the last year. And tomorrow, actually, there is a, an executive committee meeting of those that have been working on the study to report out the preferred alternative. And that would run down State Street, would have about twenty or twenty-one stops between the, the two end locations. Now, as a part of that study, there's two possibilities for reaching into Vineyard. One is to come straight down from State Street down Eighth North to Vineyard and back. That I think is the one that is, that is being proposed as part of the preferred alternative. That's the one that I've seen on the, on the preliminary drawings. But it would include a contact into Vineyard with that bus rapid transit so that Vineyard can connect into that transit going between Provo and, and Lehigh. Any questions about that particular study? That's being reported out Thursday.
Kent, what, what was the second possibility?
Second possibility was coming down Eighth North into Vineyard and then extending up Geneva Road for a ways. But that one, while that one has appeared, that one does not seem to have been part of the preferred alternative. But that's what's being reported out tomorrow. I've just seen the maps and, and both of them are there and so there will be some discussion, I'm sure, and how do we connect Vineyard into that system.
Thank you. And Council, just to let you know, the preferred alternative that we're looking at, our, our main goal is just to make sure that Vineyard was connected into the line because what they did to assure this Utah County could get a system put in place was to eliminate the light rail opportunity in order to advance BRT as a priority because of the cost effective nature of it. And so Vineyard's main priority was just to make sure that we stayed connected, the BRT line that's going in, stayed connected to the multimodal hub located in our city. And so the line that trustee Millington's mentioning is the eight hundred North connection that would extend out to State Street. Actually, I believe it carries about thirty percent of the capacity on the line, is that right?
Yes, there's, there is expected to be a fairly significant ridership simply because we'll, we'll tie into the, to the Vineyard Station. So a lot of people will take front runner to Vineyard and then catch the, catch the BRT up to State Street.
So anyway, we're looking forward to that. This alternative also allows possible infill from Linden, so that's kind of the suggested thought. If alignment wasn't to be approved, if the extension to the Vineyard connector, I mean, the Vineyard multimodal hub was to be approved, Vineyard would probably push back to see the other alternative which would go up Geneva.
All right.
Any questions on that? Doesn't look like it.
Julie?
Yeah, Brittany?
Has, has a study looked at connecting Vineyard into the UVX line? Because I, you know, we've talked about this quite a bit, it seems like being a part of a full line as opposed to a spur line where you have to make a transfer. You know, there's plenty of studies that show transferring modes, ridership drops off if you have to get off and get back on. But if you can connect it to a full BRT line like the UVX and you're part of a full line, your ridership lease from our residents would probably be greater. Have you, has that been a consideration of getting us connected to that one?
I did request that to be done in conjunction with the eight hundred North connection. Depending on where funding comes in first, I think it's critical to make sure that the hospital corridor and UVUs connected in some way. It seems like the prioritization will probably be along the State Street corridor. But in conjunction with that and outside of that, I have requested the UVX. And what I heard, and maybe Kent, you can help clarify this, but I believe that is going to be a suggestion in conjunction with the line to State Street.
Yes, yes, that, that has been part of the consideration and the, the Central Corridor Study has included that, that BRT will actually connect in with UVX. It doesn't, it would require a change, they would have to transfer, but it would connect with, to the UVX. But looking very seriously at connecting Vineyard in with the UVX is still in, in discussion. It's, it's, it's something that has been brought up every time we talk about this Central Corridor Study. So I'm assuming that it will be brought up tomorrow. In fact, if it isn't, I will bring it up and make sure that that is a subject that gets covered. But at the current proposal, the, there is a transfer required. It is not connected directly into the UVX at this point in time.
So Kent, really quick, I have a question if that's okay?
Sure.
With the BRT connection, we haven't seen the latest plan. So it will go all the way into the frontrunner states in Vineyard. So it comes off of State Street down to 800 North into Vineyard, and then will loop back up and go back down State Street. Do they have to get off and transfer to a different bus to come down 800 North and get to the station?
My understanding is, the answer to that is no, that there would, there would be a, a direct loop down into Vineyard.
That's great news.
But, but that's a, that's a good point that I will, will ask clarification tomorrow. But, but my understanding is that that, that would be a, a direct loop into, into Vineyard.
Well, and we've really, really pushed for that as well. When, when you mentioned it, we pushed for it because it just changes it, like Morgan was mentioning with UVX.
Yes.
It does something different. And so we, we're, we're super grateful for you mentioning that tomorrow and, and pushing for that.
Yeah, and we'll be there. I'll be there as well.
Yeah, let's be sure that that gets brought up because, and, and clarified. Because my understanding is that it, that that is a direct loop. But we need to make sure.
Yeah. And Jake, I think with Kent's background and, and understanding of the project, it would be really great if it specifically was brought up by him. But because we've brought it up so many times.
Either way, if I get forgetful and don't bring it up, Jake, you bring it up. We need to make sure that gets clarified.
Okay, Kent.
Yeah.
I'll ask you to bring it up.
Yeah, and maybe what we'll do is, there's going to be like three of us there, so we'll just all rotate. We'll each take a turn. Like, I agree, I agree. So that's great.
That has to be. Julia, it looks like David Larray was asking a question on whether or not it would connect to the front of the state. And I think we answered that, but yes, it will.
Thanks, Jake.
Now, there are two other studies that are being reported on that I think are, are important. Number one is the Point of the Mountain, that how do we connect the southern part of Salt Lake County into the northern part of Utah County? And that study is just, just starting to report out the preferred alternatives that would bring transit up over the Point of the Mountain. I mention that simply because the Central Corridor Study at one time was from Provo frontrunner Station to Lehigh frontrunner Station. And so that would put it on the west side of I-15. The current proposal is to take the, the Central Corridor to keep it on the, the east side of I-15 and connect with the Point of the Mountain study coming into the, basically the Adobe SR-92 I-15, but on the east side rather than on the west side to the station. Those details are being worked out. But one of the things that that does is that it, it provides a, a better connection into, for a lot of people living in Vineyard to get up there into that Adobe west, or east side of the freeway without having to drive up there and park.
Does that, when does the switch back to the west side occur in that proposal?
In that proposal, it would be at about 146th South. It's up in Salt Lake County.
Yeah.
And that, yeah, would bring it from Sandy to Draper through the prison site and then, then cross over somewhere at about 146 to get on the east side of the freeway down into, down into Lehigh.
How does that affect the west corridor, the west side of Lehigh?
Well, the, Lehigh actually wants the connection to be on the east side of I-15. So they're not nearly as concerned about the, the west side because we already have a connection to the, from, from the businesses and the buildings in the, both the west and the east side of I-15 there in Thanksgiving Point. We have a bus that circulates there now from the frontrunner station.
Does anybody have any questions about this study? I think this is really great. I know those businesses have needed it. The throughput will be changed. Like you said, it even affects us here in Vineyard.
Oh, yes. It'll, it'll affect you quite a bit. And all the more reason to clarify whether that's a direct loop or just a spur coming down into Vineyard.
Yes.
If it's a direct loop, then there's easy access all the way up into Salt Lake County.
Yeah, it makes a, a bigger difference for commuting through the silicone slopes, access for our residents and the residents that are south of us. And then what you're saying is the, the alternatives is that they're possibly thinking about reconsidering light rail and changing that to BRT so that there's easier access into the point?
Yes.
Okay.
So a lot of that is, is still very actively being, being discussed up there. But you need to be aware that that is moving forward because it, it will have an impact even as far south as Vineyard.
Yeah.
There's another study I'd like to call to your attention that I was introduced to just a couple of weeks ago. And that's one that's being, being promoted by MAG. It's called the North Lakeshore Study. Hopefully some of you are, are aware of that study. You can, they're, they're actually right now looking for public input over the next 30 days at mountainland.org slash NLstudy, as in North Lakeshore, NLstudy. You can go there and that website then as the means of looking at roads and transit and trails in separate links. And you can actually add your comments to those, those three areas. You can record your comments and your public input. So I encourage you to take a look at that. The, the area being studied is about from Vineyard north to the county line. So it's, it, it does include Vineyard significantly in that study. So.
Yeah, and just for the Council's awareness, if you haven't seen it, we did post that onto our social media. So if you wanted to share it or look at it and contribute, comment to it, that would be really wonderful.
Yeah, it's, it's an interesting study that's going on, that, that whole area. Let me just quickly, uh, uh, bring you up to date on the ridership numbers. You know that COVID-19 has had a, a very solid impact in, in the ridership. We were down about 75% from the 160,000 a day that we were carrying pre-COVID. We were down to about 40,000. We are now, that was by April. We are now back up to about the mid-60,000. So we are increasing ridership again. Part of that is due, of course, to the, to universities down in Utah County opening up. And so there's, there's been some increased activity. The ridership is generally coming back up across the system all the way from, from Provo to Ogden. But it has had a pretty significant impact.
Great. Are there any questions about ridership?
Um, yeah, I had a, I had a quick question. I'm, I'm wondering with the studies that are going on, I'm wondering if they're going to be current or updated to match the new, maybe work-from-home type program that a lot of companies are kind of embracing. I, I do, I do feel strongly that public transportation has its place for universities. But beyond that, I, I, I start to, I don't know beyond that if very many people are, are focusing on that as their main means of transport, as a go-to. And I, I'm happy to be wrong on that. But I'm very in favor, favor of it for universities. But I do get worried when I hear ridership numbers are still very down, that that may be potentially, that might be a new norm. And, and so I just want the studies to match that as, as I don't want to be, you know, I, I want to make sure we're not a part of a place that we've put a ton of money into something that isn't going to be utilized in a way that's efficient.
That, that is a concern that has been raised many, many times in, in all of our studies. And yes, it is being considered. For example, we're, we're working with Saratoga Springs and Eagle Mountain on a study for their residents. And that study is, is, has just begun. And we're addressing that issue directly right up front. Is there, will there be a decrease in the ridership and the movement of people simply because they're able to work from home? And, and as a part of the Point of the Mountain study, the, one of the real big concerns is everybody was forecasting lots of the industri, or office space being built in that area. The developers are now saying, we don't think we're going to have quite as much demand as we had originally thought because a lot of people are going to be able to work from home. And so that's a part of the discussion is what, at what level do we need to, to accommodate the new working-from-home norm, which none of us know exactly how, what that's going to be like six months from now or even two years from now. But it needs to be watched very carefully. You raise an interesting point that has all of us in the transit business a little concerned.
I just need to read a public comments about it. It said, plus one for need of public transit. I share the same concerns about wasting money on highway expansion. So that's a good point and something that we should be raising in discussions with our fellow partners at UDOT. Are those same studies being done?
Yes. And, and, and we're having to take a, a second look at these traffic models and saying how many companies, and, and we're actively looking at asking our, our partners. You may know that we have a lot of the, the larger companies in, in Salt Lake County specifically that have the pass programs with UTA. We're actively asking them, do they anticipate the level of participation in the pass program going forward that they've had in the past? And so we're just now starting to get that information. I'll let you know what we find out as we go forward. But, but that's a question that is being asked. Excellent point.
Are there any other questions or comments? Kent, do you have anything else to share with us tonight?
No, that's, that's it. Just to report tomorrow's, the Central Corridor Study will get a clarification. And to let you know that coming up shortly, we should have the, the word on the Vineyard Station and double-tracking on the, the exact engineering costs so we can address whatever shortfall may, may appear.
Excellent. Well, we will be there. And thank you so much for coming tonight and sharing this information with us. Very helpful.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to our public hearing. This is to amend the Consolidated Fee Schedule Resolution 2020-16. What I'd like to do is just go into a public hearing and then we'll hear from Mariah. We'll listen to the public and then we'll go out of it and we will make a, make, make a vote. So I need a motion.
No move.
Second?
Okay, gotcha.
And that's to go into a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are now in a public hearing. Mariah, did you want to present?
Yeah, sure. The finance portion of this is just pretty clear. It's just adding one fee, and a, a, accessory dwelling unit business license. So it's a hundred dollar worth of, hundred dollars worth of biannual renewal. That's $50. So that's the only change.
Can I interject? We did take off, we did take off some stuff that we felt didn't need to be on the consolidated fee.
Yeah, we had a room, we had a room, I forgot about that. We had a room rental fees in the city office that we haven't been doing. And we have a kind of report that's unavailable at this time. So we just took that off to the, to the.
What, what are the room rentals for?
Yeah, we did, we did, haven't been doing it. It's been unavailable for like a lot of years. We haven't ever rented out.
Sorry, yeah, they were for the old town hall rental of the old town hall. And we haven't done that for seven-plus years. And so that's why we removed it.
But didn't we recently renew it? Didn't we update those fees in the last few years?
We did not do those ones.
We did not do those. Okay. And if that came along, is that something that we would need to redo?
Yeah, it can.
Or, yeah, not anticipating it.
Definitely.
Yeah, so there's no, there's no fee in this fee, in the schedule for it right now. So if we decided we did want to do that, we would have had to adjust it. So it's just clearing something out basically.
Okay. Um, okay, are there any questions from Mariah?
If there are, because it sounded pretty simple. I can, I can move to adopt by resolution, the amended consolidated schedule.
Um, no, hold on, hold on. We do have three public comments I need to read.
Well, can I add something real quick? Would that be all right?
Yeah, go ahead, Morgan.
Okay. And so just to, and I appreciate Mariah for taking this forward. And I wanted to just to kind of explain, this does not, so already our code requires a business license for accessory dwelling units. This is simply just adding the fee because our code does require it. And it would be a biannual, so every two years. If you already have an ADU, you wouldn't pay the hundred dollar fee because you already have the ADU permit. But you would do essentially the $50 renewal fee. That would be good for two years. And so a hundred dollar initial fee is just for new accessory dwelling units. And then also, and I apologize to Mariah, there's, I meant to, to add this change, but I, I didn't. If you approve this, I would recommend that you do it with the condition that the accessory dwelling unit permit application fee for a hundred dollars be removed. Because we, this fee is supposed to replace the, the accessory dwelling unit permit application fee. And that's under the land use section of the fee schedule. So I apologize to Mariah. I should have, I should have sent that in. But the business license fee would, would replace that. So people would not be paying two hundred dollar fees.
Okay, we talked about that earlier in a meeting. And I, my clarification was that we were keeping both of those things. Jake, has Morgan clarified that it should be removed?
No, Morgan's right. Yeah, so I was confused when we were talking about it earlier. So this is replacing that fee.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. So I had a conversation with Morgan after I talked to you about it and clarified with him about, well, exactly. And I, I've got some, I've, I've got some language, you know, if you make a motion, then you can add on to that.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Okay, I don't see any comments or, I don't see any public comments in the chat. Pam, I believe you have four public comments that you need to read, right?
Yeah, I have three actually. And so I can start reading those.
Go for it.
In case. Dean Stonehocker said that he'd appreciate his comments about the ADU fees be read in the meeting. And he says this, this, he's talking about the Assemble app to, to start with. He says, "This summary information sent out with today's poll is clearly biased in favor of the fee, especially in the title question text and the pro and con section. I originally commented that there was no exclamation, explanation of what you meant by maintaining high standards for ADUs, or how the homeowners and renters are protected, or how the fee helps that beyond some general idea that money makes administration easier. I guess there actually is some description given in the city's ADU regulations, but I'm not seeing how those regulations actually protect the homeowners and renters, especially the one requiring the owner to live in the main dwelling unit. How does that affect anyone? Who cares who owns and who is renting within the house? Or where the owners live within a house they own? Or do they not really own it? And if the regulations are meant to ensure certain standards on what is provided for the renters, why not just allow the market to do that? If a dwelling isn't up to the renter's standards, they don't have to rent it. I'd much rather have city government keep their hands out of regulating what people can do with their own property and leave the money in the residents' pockets as well."
That's a great comment and one that is critical to be addressed. That's a great comment and one that is critical to be addressed. Who would like to address that comment tonight?
Oh, Mike.
Morgan. Okay, go ahead, Morgan.
Yeah, so um what the uh, what the business license does is it allows the city to do an audit to ensure that there is um an owner occupied unit. That was an important uh requirement when we went through with the A D U uh ordinance. So that what's happening tonight is simply applying a fee to what's already in the code. And so um you know, so that we're, we're not adopting an A D U code tonight, simply just adopting a fee. Uh but the reason why we require, we require them to be owner occupied is because the uh the overall appearance and upkeep of the units tend to be higher when the owner is on site. Uh also, we wanted to keep the integrity of the single family neighborhoods where these, these go. Um and by requiring the owner occupancy, it gets you away from having duplexes because the, the zoning is for single family. And so that was one of the, the, the big reasons behind the owner occupancy requirement. And also, it does allow us to look at A D Us uh to ensure that our work has been done on our permit. Um and that doing, being able to have the, the two-year business license allows the city, if we receive complaints, if we uh hear of work or expansions to the A D U going on, that we can be able to go in and ensure that the tenants of the space are in a safe environment. It provides um you know, the planning department or the building official to go in and make sure that they haven't added electrical illegally or you know, done things structurally to the unit or expanded it that, that don't need the building. So it is a public safety uh concern and an overall uh audit of the owner occupancy. So that, that's why it was put in the code, but tonight we're not, it's not an amendment to that code. It's simply applying a fee to the, the business license requirement in the code.
Morgan, part of that commentary was that they felt like the Assemble discussion was biased, but it seemed like they went back and explained that the other side of it was already within our code. Was the code posted on the Assemble um app?
You know, I, I didn't have anything to do with the, with the Assemble um description. Um so I, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure if it was provided. The, the code has been publicly posted on our um on, uh through our online publishing software. So everyone has access to it. But uh yeah, I, we, from the city side, I don't think the city wrote that description, at least the planning department didn't.
Jake, did you have any commentary on that?
No, I don't, I don't think that the code was actually embedded in that Assemble poll. Uh when I read through it, there, there wasn't any code, there were references to the, the being added in those questions that were asked.
Can we, can we update the poll to make sure that that is added in? I know there's a, ability to update it. Just from uh a transparency side, I think we need to, to add that in. We can also uh put that into the response and if anybody has comments, we can.
I think the poll is closed, so I think the best place to put it would be in the city's response to the poll.
Okay. Any other comments about this or questions?
Uh this also allows the city to go in and, and ensure that the occupancy restrictions, you know, for unrelated people living in the house is being met. Um I know that's one of the things that Provo has found um when they're doing their uh biannual review. And I don't know if they do it annually or biannually, but that's, that's one of the things that they check for as well.
Clay Winder asked if the fifty dollar renewal fee will be required for the A D U if the A D U is not occupied or being rented.
Yeah, so if um, if you don't wanna hold a, a current uh A, A D U license, then you wouldn't need to apply for it. So I, I know some people have um, you know, when the, the lease of their tenants have run out, they've decided to use their entire house for themselves. Um and so in those situations, then they, they wouldn't need to, to apply for business license. Um but if they, they restarted the business license, um we would just do the renewal fee. The hundred dollars um initial fee, the reason why it's that is because we go through a full site plan process and requires substantial amount of, of staff time. Um the, the fifty dollar renewal is um simply loo- looking into the audit of owner occupancy. And if we've had a lot of complaints, then it allows us to, to go on site and do inspection, make sure that additional work hasn't been done without permit and ensuring that there's, there's, it's a safe situation. There's not electrical that's been added without permits and that kind of stuff.
Okay, great. Pam, did you wanna read the next comment?
Yes. Um this is a two-part comment because she sent in additional um information. So this is from Marcia Smith or Geroli? Sorry, I probably butchered that, I apologize. Says, I am sending this email in hopes it will, it will be read in the city council meeting regarding adding a fee to those that own a home in an A D U. I fully disagree with passing this for the following reasons. For those that have already paid the city hundreds of dollars to do it correctly, were not informed of this upon applying for it. If you must do this, there should be a grandfather clause to protect those that have already done this without being informed of this possibility. Those that have built A D Us not, not through the city illegally are the main issues with parking. I know of several people in this category because they don't have off-street parking. They should require to pay these fees instead. This discourages people from building A D Us, which loses benefits to the city in bringing more people and solving the future housing shortage coming to Utah. Most people with A D Us are using them to offset high mortgages, which has become an increasing problem in this housing market. This fee would be another hindrance to their income. If you are worried about street parking, start enforcing it. If you fir- if you first give warning to Vineyard residents and then start enforcing through tickets, fees or fees, then you would solve those issues without having to burden the people doing it right. I truly love Vineyard and believe that they do listen to their residents, which is so important to me. I really do hope that you will take these considerations and fully think of the consequences before making a decision. And then her second comment is um, the I R S states qualified business income or Q B I is the net income gen- generated by any qualified trade or business under Internal Revenue Code, um Section one sixty-two. Rental properties are usually treated as passive activities and passive activities are excluded from the definition of a qualified trade or business. This means that although we still have to pay taxes on that income, we also don't need a business license to own rental properties unless we have multiple properties that are generating a much higher income. I don't think that Vineyard has a plausible reason to charge us business fees when the I R S doesn't even require that. They are purely doing it to put money in their pockets. Unfortunately, those that own A D Us are the minority and therefore have a lesser voice on the issue, even though they have higher stakes. That's what everyone else is not seeing.
So I have a question on this comment. So currently, we require a hundred dollar fee for business license for A D Us. Is that right, Morgan?
Um that's the initial fee and that covers a business license and then the, the site plan inspection um per that, 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 you know, that, that's the bulk of the work is done at the front end. That's why it's a hundred dollars. And that's what it is now, but we're changing it to a business license. And so that's, so basically it's the same upfront cost that applicants pay right now. But after that, it's fifty dollars every two years.
So Julie, to address the first part of your question, if she went through the process and she already paid the permit application fee for an A D U, uh she would not be required to pay that additional one hundred dollars. The only difference for her in this regard would be that fifty dollars every other year when you do the business license.
Which wasn't there before.
That's the new part, yeah. So we're changing the wording. Instead of calling it the A D U permit application fee, it's now an A D U business license fee. And then you have a renewal every other year.
And the purpose of renewal is for us to just keep checking and make sure things are up to snuff?
Right, to keep doing those inspections like Morgan's talking about, making sure it's owner occupied, making sure that they're, they're not doing additional work, creating additional bedrooms, um exceeding the four unrelated people in a house. All of that is part of this uh renewal.
But that, that's also why we add it every two years. So that we, if, we, we didn't wanna, you know, we, that's kind of what Provo does too. And they, um so they're, they're at a two-year and so we put ours at a two-year as well. We didn't wanna have to do it every single year, but we felt like every two years. Um you know, it gave us the opportunity to, to audit the, and make sure the requirements are in place. And we're only really gonna be doing like full inspections if we're receiving complaints and if there's, if there's some issues. But one of the most important things is just doing the, the owner occupancy audit.
And, and, and they don't need to pay the fifty dollar every two years if they're not using the A D U for rental purposes. Is that, am I, did I understand that correctly? Because I think that was a follow-up question as well.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be like any business license. If you start, you know, running your business, then you don't have to, you know, reapply or renew your business license.
And David Larray just asked, how exactly are we gonna be able to follow through with that process? I hope I didn't read that wrong, David, I apologize if I did.
Yeah, I, I, I think adding to that, he said, what would trigger that exactly? And I think the question was just answered with, it would be by report basis and the audit, right?
We would, we would do a portion of it with the business license. We do a, like Morgan's saying, every two years, this business license would come up for renewal. So we would send a renewal notice out. We would also check at that point for owner occupancy. So that we don't have duplexes in these single family, uh these single family settlements.
Um Jake, can you address the second part of the commentary about taxation?
So the I R S code does treat rental income as passive income, but that doesn't have any impact on the ability to charge a business license fee. So you can, you can collect passive income uh in multiple ways, but it doesn't have any impact on the city's ability to charge a business license fee for a, a rental property.
Are there any other comments or questions about this person's comment?
Uh it looks like Marcia is on, online. Um I don't know if she has any follow-up questions or would like, would like to respond to any of the comments.
Uh yeah, actually I would. Um so follow up with that. So even though like it's okay for the city to do that, like why is it necessary? I guess is the question that I have.
Julie, you want me to respond?
Yeah, please.
So uh Marcia, as we've gone through the, the uh research in our, as we've adopted these A D U ordinances over the past few years, um one of the things that we have heard from other cities is that, is that they, they run into issues where people get an A D U approved and then they sell the home or they rent the home out to two people, two groups of people instead of living in one side and uh renting, so you live in the upstairs and you rent the basement out. Um and what other cities have found is that over time, those properties that are rented out like a duplex are the ones that start to have the most complaints and they're the ones that are kept in the lowest uh shape. And so that's uh, that's kind of the issue that they've seen. Um and the, the way to kind of audit that, like Morgan talked about, is to every other year do a, do a renewal fee, give you an opportunity to check in on owner occupancy.
I guess so. Oh my god.
Marcia, did you have additional comments back?
Sorry, my husband just was saying like, well, can they just address it then and then charge fees accordingly if that happens? Or does it have to be something? Because for me, I look at it and I see a lot of people, for instance, in our neighborhood who are like, well, like we don't wanna have to pay the city all this stuff, so we're just gonna do it without the city. Like we'll just do it on our own. And we know multiple people who have decided to do an A D U without permitting or anything. And I feel kind of like, like the fee should be going towards them because, I mean, technically, they're the ones that are causing a lot of these issues versus those of us that are trying to make sure. I mean, like we make sure everything's maintained, we make sure that, you know, we've gone through the proper channels and I, I don't know, I just, it, to me, it just seems like it's in the long term, maybe it makes sense, but I don't know. To me, it just seems like it's an unnecessary step when, you know, you can still go in there and you can still do things um since we already, you know, started the business fee or whatever um that you were saying at the beginning um when we did the application. So I mean, you can still go in and check. I just, I, like, it, that still doesn't really connect with me on why it would be a biannual thing.
Marcia, I, I wanna add to this. Jake and Morgan, I feel like this kind of addresses several people's comments right now and some of the comments that were maybe unanswered before as far as what triggers inspection. Because uh Marcia brings up a really good point in that the people that we are trying to focus on are probably not going to participate in this. And if this is going to give us a better opportunity to make sure um things are being taken care of, really this only affects the people who are already in compliance with our um systems. How are we addressing the people that are the fallout?
Uh so what we do is we work through code enforcement. So we do receive um quite a few uh complaints. So uh you know, people complain all the time about someone that, that may be using um their own for either an owner occupancy or, or having a, a duplex that was supposed to be set up as, as an A D U. So we do receive uh code, code complaints on those and they go through the code enforcement process. Our feeling when we went through the planning commission and, and just to kind of say it again, the code is already in place. This is, tonight is simply applying a fee to the business license. But the, the conversation that occurred at the, like the planning commission level was essentially treating people, uh that everyone gets treated the same. And so um that's where the business license allows us to um have that. Every two years, we can ensure owner occupancy. Um we have software that we would set it up so it would, it would trigger, just like any other um business license. Um it would trigger that we needed to, to do a renewal, we'd send out letters. Um and the people that would do the inspection, uh most likely it would be someone from the planning office and what they would look at is um their requirements under the A D U code. There's like thirteen of them and we would check those. And then if uh, you know, if there were building department type questions, then we could have a building official go out as well.
So Morgan, the code is in place where they already need to kind of reapply every two years?
Yeah, that, that, that's in the code that was adopted.
And so the fee is what we feel is budgeted for staff time needed to take care of it?
Yeah, it's definitely not, not an income um generator. Uh the, you know, especially the hundred dollars at the front end. Typically, staff puts uh several hours in working with applicants, getting the site plan, floor plans together. Most of the time when we get a, an application, there's a lot of time just working with them to refine it. So we actually know the square footage and, and for the entrances and then we have to do site inspections. Um the every two year provides uh, it, it'll, it covers the cost of sending um an official out. That's, that's the standard fee that we work for the building department on. And then it covers um Kelly's administration time. So her sending out uh the renewal letters and, and taking it through the, that business license process. It's definitely not an income. But our, our fees, we, we can't make money off the fees. They have to just cover, um, cover, cover our time, so that's why.
I have a question then for Marcia. Marcia, was your, was your commentary more directed towards the process or the fifty dollar renewal fee?
Um I think it was more directed towards the fifty dollar renewal fee and I'm still, I'm sorry, I, I think I'm missing something. So I'm trying to figure out, can you not then check on somebody without that? Like, so what, like what's the purpose of adding in the fee? Like, why can't you go and check on, like if you get, for instance, five complaints about one house, um could you like not go check on it yourself without that business fee? Or, sorry, I'm just trying to figure out what I'm missing here.
I think it's just staff time. Is there a calculated the amount of staff time it takes to be able to accomplish the, what's already?
So can you charge that to the people that are, you know, being complaint, like having complaints against them? Or is that just something that's not possible?
We do that through, through code, code enforcement and so we would do that regardless. I mean, if someone complained about an A D U even after, you know, this, if the fee gets approved, we could still do um code enforcement. It allows us to ensure that um, you know, like one of the most important things, like we used to not have an A D U ordinance. When, when it was adopted, uh one of the, you know, the number one priorities from the city was to ensure owner occupancy so that we did not have duplexes. Or the, the city would, would not have adopted the A D U code uh otherwise. And so that was a, a really important part and this provides that mechanism where the city can ensure um through the audit. And this provides that mechanism where the city can ensure, um, through the audit. And also it provides the, um, you know, for public safety that, you know, if there's, if there's work that's been done or expanded, um, then we're able to catch, um, you know, building department type issues. And so if there's a.
Morgan, or what you're saying is if it's on a complaint basis that inspection is triggered, the funding mechanism comes through the code enforcement budget. But if the people that are doing this properly are going through their every other year application because they're continuing to run ADUs, staff time's been calculated in order to process what's going on, the fifty dollars. If a person is not continuing with ADUs and is not going to renew, then there would be no charge?
Right.
Does that answer your question, Marcia?
I'm so sorry. You must be so annoyed with me, but honestly, I'm just, like I said, I'm just a little, like, so, I'm trying to figure out why, um, you, you can't just charge those fees. Because I know you said those fees are basically to cover all of the people that are going to be working on this and maybe inspecting, inspecting or whatever. Um, why can't those be charged to the people that are having complaints against them? Like, why does it have to be charged to the people that are actually doing what they're supposed to be doing?
Let me, let me explain it. I'll try one more time to kind of maybe use different wording with it. I think what you're focused on right now is actually the process. And this is why. There's three different forms being associated right now. There is the people who are being reported on because they are not following the law. There are the people that are following the law and, in the process. And then there are the people who are not associated with the ADUs because they are no longer renewing. Do you understand the three different groupings?
Yes.
Okay, so with the person that's being reported on, it's very possible that we could associate a fee with them? Hold on one minute.
Balance, balancing being a mayor and a mom at the same time should do it pretty gracefully.
Thank you, Jake. Um, so it's very possible that we could add a fee for the person that's doing, that's breaking the law. What Morgan was saying, however, is that that fee is when they break the law, we do have a system where we charge them fees or go through, um, a process to get those people to come back into compliance.
Yeah, so there are code enforcement fines.
Yes, fines. So secondly, the person who is following the law, which looks like it's you, is going to renew your license every two years. And in that process, there's going to be a review and that would cost fifty dollars of staff time is what I'm understanding from the process. Is that right?
Right.
Yes. And then the third person, if you're deciding that you no longer wanna participate in this, you would have no annual fee as you'd no longer participate. My understanding of your issue, though, is that the process of the review every two years is the real burden on the situation because we need to be able to pay for staff timing with the fifty dollars, which would make sense for, for maintaining staff. But maybe what you're saying is that the process is too much? Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
No, but I actually do, I, I, I understand a little bit more. Um, I just, so basically it's for them to come and inspect it every two years, is what you're saying?
Right.
Yes.
And I get that. I'm just saying, like, to me, I can just see that as an issue later on where people say, oh, well, I'm not gonna do an ADU anymore, even though they still use it just so they don't have to pay the fine or the fee, sorry.
Well, the, uh, if I can explain really quick, Mayor, that, that, so the code enforcement fine, uh, is up to a thousand dollars. What, what it is, is that's, the initial is a hundred dollars and then it's twenty-five dollars per day, up to a thousand dollars. Uh, and so the, the fifty-two, you know, I'm sorry, the fifty-dollar business license fee is substantially cheaper than having, and, um, quite, um, less of a headache than going through the code enforcement process. Uh, and so I, you know, and we typically try to work with people when, when they are under violation so they just go through the process and then they, they don't get fined if they can, you know, get, get moving through that process. Um, but yeah, Jake was right. There, there are fees and they, they can get pretty costly if, uh, if people don't come into compliance.
Yeah, so, uh, Marcia, maybe to address that, I think it boils down to, um, the staff does need to spend time responding to these, uh, these issues. And the city council could decide that they wanna subsidize that cost. So we could decide, or the city council could decide to waive the, the fee. But what that would require is the city to then budget general fund money for this project or program. Um, and to address the concern about, uh, because essentially you are self-reporting. If you're allowed to say, well, we're not renting it anymore, um, we're not gonna come out and do an inspection. And so you, you are self-reporting and you would be paying that fifty dollars every two years. In the city, we have tried to take away the motivation to do that by, by making the fee low. And we did the same thing. I don't, if, if you finish your basement, I don't know if you have or not. But if you finish your basement with the city, we made basement finishes, uh, very cheap. When you compare them to, um, the, the permit fee that you paid for your single-family home to be constructed, uh, the basement finishes extremely cheap. It barely, if, if it even covers the cost of having the inspector come out to your home. Because we wanted people to go through the process. And so we've tried to keep that fee as low as possible and still cover the cost to administer the program.
Jake, in that, in your research, did you determine if a fifty-dollar renewal fee would deter ADUs? Or did it not come back in that regard in the cities you studied?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, obviously there's a financial component and so it will. Some people will follow the law regardless of what the fee is, um, and some people won't regardless of what the fee is. Uh, but there, there probably are some. It'd be, it'd be, you know, inaccurate to say that adding a fifty-dollar fee is not gonna push some people away. But if you boil it down, it's two dollars a month on an income problem. So you're renting this property to make additional money to help, you know, meet the demands of the family or, or cover your mortgage or whatever. We assessed a fee as low as we felt possible to cover the cost to administer the program. But the city council could decide, I mean, in the grand scheme of things, if we had fifty dollars every two years, that's twenty-five dollars a year. If you have a thousand, uh, a thousand ADUs, then it would be twenty-five thousand a year. That's not a huge amount in a budget the size of the city's budget. So if the city council decided to waive the fee, they could do that. And it's not gonna have a drastic impact on the budget. But it is a way for us to recoup the cost, help with general fund expenses, like the planning department and the building department, who will be dedicating time.
And Jake, Jake, can I just add something really quick to our, uh, and this kind of goes to David Larray's question? Um, you know, there are, there is, um, our, our policy, unless, you know, a change from the city council, is whenever we have an application, um, the cost of that application is, uh, is to cover the cost of processing it. And that, that's pretty standard with their billing permit fees, planning fees, subdivision fees, um, you know, business licensing fee. All, uh, whenever a fee is established, it's to, it's to cover the cost of doing the administration of that fee. So that's where we're sticking with our policy. Whenever you have, uh, an application, the fee should cover the cost of it.
Okay, are there further comments on Marcia's comment?
Can I just say one more thing? I'm sorry. I really do appreciate that you guys are looking into this. Um, and honestly, I don't think that fifty dollars every two years is outrageous. Like, that to me is understandable. I guess the biggest issue I have is I just see that all of the people that are doing it the right way legally are gonna be the ones that are, you know, because for us, like, I know that we will always do the right thing. We'll always, you know, go through the legal channels because I just think that's the way to do life. But I just know so many people are not going to do it. And it just, to me, and I know it's something that you guys can't control very well, but it just, to me, is so, like, frustrating that there's so many people that are going through the back channels and, like, instead of them being penalized, it's the people that are doing, I guess, the right thing. It almost, I mean, obviously we're not being penalized, but it almost feels like that if it makes sense a little bit.
Yeah, and I would like to address your comment very quickly. And then, and then, um, we will probably move on to the next comment. But this is kind of what happens. If somebody has built an ADU that didn't follow our business or, or inspections, or, or list of how we do things for safety for the community. First of all, um, when they do come and apply, they have to go through inspections. And the cost of ripping things out to come into compliance is really significant. And it's happened to people in our community. It's, it's, if some people didn't know that this was the process they needed to, other people were more aware of it. However, that in and of itself is costly. Oh, and that, that can go up to thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars of reconstruction. The number two thing that occurs that Morgan was explaining is that the goal is to get everybody to come into compliance. So when somebody does report on it and somebody moves into a, a ADU that hasn't been done properly or they aren't following the systems, then the fines can go up to a thousand dollars. And the goal isn't to fine them, it's to bring them back into the proper order of doing things. So they would still have to apply for a business license and then follow, follow the plan if people, if we learned about the situation. So it, it could, it, the cost for somebody who doesn't follow it oftentimes end up being quite a bit more significant than the people that followed it originally. Morgan or Jake, do you have anything to add on to that? Did I say that?
Yeah, I think this, that, yeah, uh, George and I recently, uh, dealt with one. It's kind of a sad situation, but they finished their entire basement, uh, without a permit for an ADU and, uh, you know, all the electrical plumbing, I, I believe they, they put in columns. They put up all the walls, uh, and, and did, did even a walkout. And because the city has to inspect, you did the framing, they have to inspect the electrical connections, the plumbing. Um, it's gonna require, um, a lot of the interior work to be removed. Um, and so it's actually kind of, kind of a sad situation with, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna require thousands of dollars on the, on the, on the homeowner. We're doing our best to work with them, but it's, um, you know, people that do it without going through the proper channel run a huge risk. Whereas someone like Marcia, who does everything right, you know, at least you don't have that hang, hang, hanging over you. Because, you know, we do run into those situations and, uh, you know, it is kind of a sad thing to see because it's a lot of money for someone to, to come up with because they have to rip things down and then they have to put them back up. Um, anyway.
No, go ahead, Jake.
Yeah, uh, just to respond, um, Dave, David Larray has some comments that are kind of in the same vein and I'd like to respond to his. He's made a few comments and I think we've responded to some of them, um, but not all of them. So, uh, the inspection process, the code enforcement processes, we would respond to any code complaints, uh, just like we would for any other, uh, code enforcement issue that comes up to the city. Um, and then we would send out, uh, the code enforcement team to go take care of that issue. Um, but he asked specifically if we could inspect some ADUs and not others. It will all be handled through, uh, complaints. So it'll all be handled through our code enforcement department. Um, and then the other question that he, that he asked is if there were no ADUs, wouldn't the city personnel still be paid? Isn't that already paid in their, in their budget? And that is true. Uh, we have, we have the general fund that covers, uh, both the planning department and the building department's budget. But, um, part of the cost to administer those programs needs to be funded. Whether that's funded directly from property tax, from all of the residents in the city, or funded directly from the cost of running the program. That's the decision that the city council needs to make.
Which is what you were talking about, whether the city council subsidizes each property?
Right.
Through property tax or if those properties pay for it themselves, which is the two-dollar fee per month? Um, Anthony Jenkins wrote, how should improper ADUs and unpermitted basements finish, finishes be reported ideally? We have an online reporting system. That's the best way to do it. If you sign in and you make a login, our staff can follow up with you to let you know how the process went. Um, but there is a guest login that you can do as well. Um, and then our code enforcer, enforcement, um, department will go through it, review it, send it to the right departments. And just one more thing that I wanted to add about the people that try to come into compliance after they have built an ADU. The city does all that they can to work with them and follow state code and city code. Um, because the goal is to have people come back into compliance. So we try really hard. Some situations are harder than others, but that is the ultimate goal. Pam, you had a third comment?
Yes. Okay, um, this is from Shay Hope. Is she online? I can't see that.
I don't see a Shay Hope online.
Okay, then I'll read her comment. Um, on the issue of the amount of the fee, this is not simply a hundred dollar, fifty, a hundred and fifty-dollar fee. There are a lot of other costs. Fifty thousand to finish the basement, application inspection fee four hundred and thirty-six, delayed rent due to ADU approval time, two hundred and fifty estimate. Many times homeowners put all they have into the basement apartment and this additional fee breaks the camel's back. Number two, you are overgeneralizing the issue. This fee should not be put in place because there is no connection between a fee to a homeowner and improving our community issues. Taking, take parking, for example. Many homeowners have sufficient parking for their basement apartments. Why should all homeowners with ADUs be charged this fee? This is punishing everybody for a few people's problems. This is not how we work as a government system. We punish those who are breaking the law. We do not generalize and punish everyone because there's a possibility that they may break the law in the future. We don't give everyone a ticket for speeding because some people speed. My suggestions are increase and enforce the existing parking fines, charge the people that are breaking the law. Please repeal this new fee, vote it down.
Pam, what was this person's name? Shay?
Shay Hope. Shay Hope is her name.
It seems like, again, this might be a procedure, um, a procedural thing because, and this is why I say it's, uh, the Marcia's comment and Shay's comment is procedural. Because I can't imagine, um, that Marcia or Shay would ask other residents to subsidize the process that's in the procedure that helps, um, meet the needs that are in the procedure so that they can run an ADU. So what I'm imagining is happening is that both Marcia and Shay feel like these inspections are not necessary. Um, and don't feel like it's delivering a benefit because the proc, the things that they view as the issue are parking, noise, nuisance, um, and things that are violating our other codes that are non-associated with the current procedure that we're coming up with a budget for. Is, would that be a proper description of what's going on?
Yeah, this is Morgan. Uh, I think, I, I, I think you're right. I wanted just to correct, um, one thing in Shay's comments. Um, it's not a hundred and fifty dollars. It's a hundred dollars initially and that covers you for two years. And then at the end of the two years, it's fifty dollars. If you already have an ADU, the, the, the business license fee is just fifty dollars. And so it's not, and so that, that, then, you know, I figured I needed to clarify that. Because a hundred and fifty is, is quite a bit, but initially a hundred dollars, two years and fifty. If you already have one, then it's fifty dollars initially.
Julie, I think you boiled it down right, though. I think you're, the decision that the city council is making tonight is do you wanna have a fee for us to do these inspections? Or, uh, would your preference be that we subsidize that with general fund?
Are there any?
Um, I'm, I'm happy to make a comment on it, um, as far as what I, what I, my personal opinion would be as far as how we approach this. I feel like ADUs are a, an opportunity for homeowners, uh, in the city to potentially make a little bit of extra, um, and, and/or subsidize their own cost of living. And, and I think it's a wonderful opportunity that many take advantage of. And I don't feel like the fees that I'm hearing we're referencing. And I don't feel like the fees that I'm hearing we're referencing are over the top. And it is, it does involve the city and city administrators having to follow up and make sure that there are compliances. And it sounds like the people who are abusing ADUs, there are some serious penalties in place to, um, you know, basically make them pay a lot more for what they've tried to do when, when that is, you know, when that's addressed. So I am comfortable with what we have set forth here. And, and I would vote accordingly, but that's just, I'm just one vote.
Okay. Um, I have one more, well, I guess if there's no other comments from the public, can we go out of a public hearing? Can I get a second by Christie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're now out of a public hearing, so this is a time for the council to discuss. Were there any other comments on this? Christie, Tice?
This is Tice. I would just add for my part that, uh, one of the components of this is we rely upon the citizens of our good community to help us maintain the order and quality of our lifestyle in this community. We cannot, nor will we go out and patrol the streets looking for riggers of this code. That isn't our position, nor should, but we rely upon our citizens to help us to keep order in this city. And if there are people in their neighborhood who are causing them to say some pain and worry because they're not conforming to the code, then we must rely upon them to help us. That way they do not need to feel like they're bearing the full burden of paying for someone else's sins, as it were. We are most concerned with the health, welfare, safety and quality of life of our citizens. And we act by creating codes to maintain that order in our community. So we don't have a mess that some people could find in our neighboring communities because of the failure to maintain proper order.
Thank you, Tice. Christie, did you have any comments?
Um, I have, I agree with, I appreciate the discussion that's been happening. Um, I appreciate all of the points of view that the staff has brought up. Um, I appreciate what the council said, John, I agreed with what you said. And, um, I think Julie, what you said was kind of hit home, which is, I doubt there are very many residents in our city who, when realizing that the city would be subsidizing, you know, a choice that they've made to, to have an ADU in their home, which is a personal choice. Um, I think once people realize that, they would, they would necessarily feel quite as strong. And I don't think the fee is, um, you know, an astronomical amount. And, um, I'm not in favor of subsidizing it. Um, I think twenty-five thousand dollars, when we look at a huge budget, um, might be not be that much. But, um, considering we could do a project for four hundred dollars in our city last week that really brought a lot of joy to our residents, twenty-five thousand dollars is quite a bit.
Yeah, and just to clarify, Christie, we don't have a thousand ADU permits. I just was throwing a number out there, so I, I hope I didn't miss, miss beat there.
I appreciate that. But whatever that amount is, um, um, I've, I've read all the comments about this. I went through the Assemble app and the surveys. And, um, I have had conversations with residents who have been caught up in a system where they tried to cut corners. And we've had to have those discussions where we had to explain how they're going to tear all their sheet rock and all sorts of things in their basements to come into compliance. And it is a really sad situation and, um, and so any way we can motivate and help people go through the proper channels, I'm all in favor of. So that's how I feel about it.
Excellent. Um, I guess my comment, my last comment is I agree with what the council said. And Marcia and Shay, I understand your, um, your points of conflict with the people that are not, um, currently following our guidelines or the city's, um, other ordinances about sound and things like that, um, as far as parking, sound, any of those things. If you do have a, an issue with this procedure, I would recommend that you bring it to the planning commission. Morgan is on here right now and you could reach out to him about bringing that on to an agenda for further discussion. Um, with that being said, I would just need a motion.
I can, I can make the motion to adopt by resolution, the amended consolidated heat schedule as presented.
You need to, you need to actually change it, uh, to also eliminate the, uh, the ADU permit. Morgan said he has some language for that.
Yeah, I've got some language.
I can, I can make the motion if, if you guys want to help me with the language.
Yeah, so I, I, I can read the language into the record and you can say it's stated by staff if you'd like.
Very good, go for it.
And let me see, I've got a bunch of notes, we should make it the right one. Okay, um, so I, it would be remove the accessory dwelling unit application fee under the land use application fee section of the fee schedule. So you, you make a motion and then as read in the record.
I, I, I make that motion as read by Morgan in the, in the record.
You need a second?
Aye.
This is done by roll call. John?
Yay.
Christie?
Yay.
Tice?
Aye.
Chris is excused and yay. Okay, that has passed. Thank you, everybody, for your commentary, for the discussion. I think those, uh, comments were very important and I hope that you'll be able to address your concerns and reach out to Morgan. And if you have additional feedback, please do not hesitate to reach out to us. Uh, we'll move on to eight point two, discussion in action, amending the municipal code Title VII Public Utilities Ordinance 2020. And this will also be done, um, presented by Mariah.
Yeah, so with this, we're essentially, we've had, uh, some policies in place of, for, uh, our water and our water utility applications and sewer, and, uh, that just haven't been codified. And so we're trying to do that and then also just cleaning up, uh, where instead of calling it sewer, wastewater and superintendents managers, and just cleaning up the language to, uh, more represent how we're actually operating right now. And then also like taking out, uh, taking out the utility application form from the code and letting that just be administrative and things like that. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, did you have questions after reviewing the document? Okay, I don't see any.
Actually, yeah, I, I had a quick question on this one. I was just wondering, as far as, it, it, it read that thirty days, you know, at thirty days, it sounded like it got pretty serious pretty fast as for, for people who are. Am I, did I read that wrong?
So it's thirty days, uh, yeah, it's thirty days delinquent. So when we, we process bills at the beginning of each month and then you have till the end of the month to pay, so thirty days. And then when you're an additional thirty days after that, so essentially you have to be two months past due. And that's when we will give you a shut off notice.
Okay, okay. And so, and there's a shut off notice and process, it's not like thirty days and your water's shut off. Okay, I, I couldn't read that very well, so I just, so we have, so they have sixty days and then notices, serious notices and warnings begin.
Yep.
Okay, very comfortable with that. Okay, very good.
Okay, counsel, anyone else have any commentary? If not, I just need a motion.
I can find it, I will make that motion for you unless Tice has got it.
I got it. I meant we adopt ordinance twenty, twenty twelve, amending municipal code Title VII Public Utilities past present.
Can I get a sec? This is done by roll call. Christie?
Aye.
John?
Yeah.
Tice?
Aye.
Chris is excused, yay. Okay, this has passed. Let's go to a public hearing, amending the zoning code, medical cannabis ordinance twenty thirteen. I will need a motion to go into a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Who are you doing?
Seconded by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're in a public hearing.
Sorry, who moved?
Tice and then John seconded. Morgan.
Yep, thank you. Jake, can you enable my, uh, my screen so I can share with the council?
Yep.
Thank you. All right, are you able to see this map?
Yep.
Hey, great. Um, so what this ordinance does, it, it does a couple of things. As you know, in two thousand eighteen, the state passed legislation allowing for, um, medical cannabis. And, um, what our ordinance does, it, so it follows pretty closely the Draper and the West Valley ordinances. Um, it allows for three uses. The two main ones are the medical cannabis production and, uh, medical cannabis pharmacy. Uh, the medical cannabis, uh, production is the, uh, allows for like the cultivation of the plants and also, uh, you know, breaking those plants down into some, and, and just some sort of use that can be, uh, sold uh, through, uh, through the, the medical pharmacy. So, um, and it would be the, what is contained in the THC. So right now we have a, a, a business in our city, um, life elevated. And, uh, they do the CBD, um, production and that, that's our, they have the permit for that. And, uh, so that, that's already allowed use, but to go beyond that, to, uh, produce the medical cannabis, the state would have to provide, um, the, the permit. Um, and so what this code does, it paves the way from a local, um, legislation standpoint, uh, for those uses. Uh, it would allow for medical cannabis production in both the M and the FOI districts. The M is the manufacturing, the FOI is the, the light industrial flex office, um, uh, district that we have. Medical cannabis pharmacy would only be allowed within the FOI district. And I'll pull the code up and bring you through it. Are you able to see this code, this table?
Yes, we can see it.
Great, thank you. Um, and so what this does, um, this adds the use to the district use table. Uh, provides a P, P is permitted. Um, the eight, it, uh, provides a note at the bottom of the table that just references development standards. Um, and I'll, I'll, I'll get more into that. So it provides a permitted use in the FOI, uh, for cannabis production establishment and in the manufacturing district. We run down further in the table, um, under pharmacy medical cannabis. It provides a permitted use in just the FOI. Um, we are adding a pharmacy use and, and we're adding it to the, uh, the retail commercial districts of our code. We felt that if, because they are defined separately by the state, that if we, uh, are going to add a, um, a medical cannabis pharmacy, then we also need to distinguish between, uh, what a regular pharmacy is. So our, our regular pharmacies currently under the state legislation does not, um, allow for, um, the selling of medical cannabis. And so we use kind of a really boilerplate, um, standard pharmacy definition for that one.
Hey, Morgan, just to clarify, with the pharmacy medical cannabis portion, is that only permitted in the zoning that you mentioned above?
Yep, so that, so, um, and one reason why we, we did it in, in the FOI and the, uh, M districts is because we felt that it, it kind of pushed those uses further away from the residential areas. State code, um, does have some distance requirements from, uh, protected uses like a church, schools, and from, uh, residential. I believe Jeff Hartley's on here, so if I'm screwing things up, feel free to, to, to correct the record. So we felt like, um, this would be kind of the, the easiest and best spot from a, a distance requirement. And plus this is also where our, um, our, our industry manufacturing uses al- already are. And so it fits in pretty, pretty well with, with, um, you know, the, that, that district, this use would fit in well for. Go back to, um, any more questions on the table? I can jump down to the definitions section if not.
Any other questions on the table? No?
Okay, so we added, uh, a few definitions, uh, cannabis production establishment. We referenced it, the state code. So this references the, uh, state code, uh, chapter that, that provides a definition, uh, for that use. And we did the same thing for the cannabis pharmacy use. There we go. So, uh, yeah, pharmacy medical cannabis, we also reference state code. So if the state code changes, we don't have to change our code, the two will, will align. Now, we did provide a definition for pharmacy, any place where prescription drugs are dispensed, but does not include the dispensing of medical cannabis or associated products. And then lastly, um, we added some development standards. And these are in line with what I believe West Valley and both Draper have in their code. And what it does is that, uh, it provides things for like the, 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 the police powers of, of a, of, of a, of a city. It looks at, um, so it says, there shall be no emission of dust, fumes, vapors, odors or waste into the environment permitting facility where growing, processing or testing of cannabis occurs. And then cannabis production establishments shall meet the land use requirements for the zone in which they are located. So they still have to meet the setbacks and high requirements. And then, um, for the medical pharmacies, uh, no cannabis product shall be visible from the outside of a medical cannabis pharmacy. So there wouldn't be storefront windows with the products, uh, being, being displayed. But they, typically they're, uh, they would be kept in the back and then, um, you would order, um, from like this, from the, the customer area and then, um, and then they bring the product out too. Um, two of the, um, the building square footage dedicated to the retail use of the medical cannabis pharmacy shall not exceed twenty-five percent of the building or development in which it's located. The reason why we have that requirement is because currently the FOI limits retail uses to twenty-five percent. And the reason why our code does that is because the FOI is, uh, it is an industrial, um, category, uh, district. And we are trying to limit the, the amount of like shoppers, people walking around. And so we've done that through square footage. There's a lot of trucks and distribution and people, you know, building stuff in the FOI. So, um, retail customers, we're trying to push the bulk of those into our retail districts. And so we do limit the square footage. As you know, like Bella Lash had a small, um, you know, display area in the front. So we do allow some so that these, these businesses could display products and have customers come in. Uh, but we wanted to, to cap that, that percentage. So this just treats them, the medical cannabis pharmacy use similar to other retail uses. It doesn't restrict it further than, than it already is. And then there's a business license requirement. Cannabis production establishes medical cannabis pharmacy shall be located as required. And it, it talks about the section, so it points back to the district use, use section. And then if any city regulation regarding cannabis production establishments or medical cannabis pharmacies is in conflict with the Utah code, state code takes precedent. So, um, the state already strongly regulates these uses. And so from a city end, um, you know, we, we, we're adding a, a few here, but the, the state, um, has a pretty extensive process. They do a lot of background, background checks and things like that. Um, and so we didn't feel like we needed to do, to overly regulate that this type of use. By limiting, limiting, um, them to the FOI and the M districts, that, that does a lot from, um, the city side in separating the use from the residential areas and kind of those protected type uses like churches and parks and schools. But that's, that's everything from the staff end. The staff has recommended for a little plank mission, mission held at public hearing and they recommended it as well.
Excellent. Are there any questions? I didn't see any in the chat.
And I didn't get any.
Okay, can I get a motion to go out of a public hearing then?
So moved.
Uh, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, this is a time for the council to discuss. Counsel, do you have questions or comments?
Is the applicant here tonight?
Um, this is more of a, just a zoning change, are you referring to?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if anybody from the, from, um, the companies here.
So it's, it's city initiated, just to clarify, it's city initiated, um, but yeah, we're, we are doing it because, um, it was brought to our attention from, from the company. I don't see the applicant Bev on, um, it's like Jeff is on. So you may be able to speak a little bit.
Well, because Bev wouldn't, Bev wouldn't be the applicant. Because what, I think why we initiated it was so that we could make sure to put it in the areas of our city that we felt was, uh, most. Put it in the areas of our city that we felt was uh most appropriate and protected, like you said. Gave those protections to residents or places since it is allowed within the state. So Bev, would it be here, but did you have comments for the person that's currently doing the processing, Christie?
Well, maybe Morgan or whoever knows more about this can be more helpful, I'm just, so. What are the reasons why we need to shelter this from the public, why are we are why are we needing to put it far away?
Well, that's our uh manufacturing district anyway, and so that's that's where like the art, the production and those types of things happen, trucks coming in and out. So that was the idea, is keeping, because it it does fall under a manufacturing use. And so we felt like the manufacturing end of things, um it felt it fit better in the manufacturing in the FOI district. So that's why the the production use was was put there, because that that's the it seems like the most applicable zone. Um the the pharmacy, which I I think you're probably talking more about, the like the retail component. Um typically, uh kind of from what we've heard is having a like a storefront. Um attached to that use would would be desirable. And so it felt like you could do a fault, a small uh medical cannabis pharmacy at the front end of the production uh facility. Um and so we we wrote it so that it could fit in uh under that type of of arrangement. Um what we could do is if you had a medical cannabis pharmacy that wanted to come in around. Like the megaplex area or whatever other main retail uh districts, there'd be a text amendment and the city council would be able to to look at it at that point. Um I talked to a company in uh out of Florida that is is moving into the Utah market. And one thing that um that I was told from from their representative was that. They would rather not be in a main retail district because of um you know unfortunately that the stigma of of medical marijuana. People that you know, um they have patients that are getting a prescription. Um for medical marijuana, uh a lot of them don't want to be seen by their neighbors or you know or other people they. So that actually the FOI district kind of works out well, because it 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 could provide more of a a private location. But in reality, if someone wanted to come into the at the RMU district or something like that, we could we could look at it at it then. You're welcome to, if if the council wanted to, you could add it to 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 um the RME district, the RC district. But from a, I guess, just allowing the use as like a first step into the city. Um the FOI just seemed like an easier one, because it that district already meets all the the distance requirements from um schools, churches. You know, residential uses.
Have you done any research on how this has been? How these dispensaries have affected other communities that have have brought them into their communities um in either a positive or negative way?
Um I did some research on Utah cities, like I didn't do like a a nationwide one, I'm happy to do that if you'd like me to. Um and I I didn't see a lot from Utah, I found more of the zoning codes that like West Valley and Draper had established. Um so I I don't I don't know if uh, yeah, yeah, I I I don't have anything beyond that, I'm happy to do the research though if you'd like uh more information on it.
I would I would like to have some more information on that, just in the small amount of time I did some Googling myself. Um it seemed to bring up issues where um and again, this is just my own research. Uh that communities that had brought them in had seen decreased home values, people had a tendency to move away from those communities. Um there was increased crime in the community and also um they were having issues with the high schools that were nearby that the. The high school students had easier access to.
Yeah.
Products and were distributing them and was causing issues in their communities.
Um we do have Jeff Harley on, I don't know if Mayor or Christie, if that if you feel like that that would be good to have him respond, I know he's done a ton of work kind of in in this realm. Maybe able to to provide more information than than I have on it.
Yeah, Jeff, do you have anything that you could add to this?
Um I, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yes.
So I would only add that the the state has has worked um uh. When when the when the referendum was passed, the state of Utah adopted um in its in the Utah code. Uh requirements to protect um the communities that these places would reside. But also recognizing that that we're treating this as a medical um treatment. And as a medical treatment, they didn't want to make it too cumbersome for patients to have access to um the pharmacies. So the pharmacies and and the production facilities have the same setback requirements. That the state has adopted for liquor stores and smoke shops and other things, and there's a there's a there's a setback. Um that is required that they have to meet, which is why most of them are located in um in either light industrial or um commercial. Areas that that are far away from a a library, school or another community facility. The but again, they the state has adopted a medical cannabis law and. They they want patients to have access to pharmacies nearby where they live, so there's delivery option that that every pharmacy has to provide. But they also um have asked cities and that there's no requirement, they've asked cities to accommodate these locations. So that there's a geographic dispersion of stores and the or pharmacies and they're available to the general public. So that's the objective of the state, and I I don't know if that answered your question, Christie, but that's kind of where the state started from.
And Christie, I don't know where a lot of your research has come from, was it in states that also allowed for recreational use?
That's where I saw.
Um one of the things I was looking at was in uh Florida and in Colorado.
Oh.
Yeah, for sure, there, so the state of Utah was very diligent in researching other markets, similar markets that were only. Uh dealing with medical and it it's tricky because a lot of them started with medical and then then the recreational cannabis use encroached uh into those states, but. Um they are taking, they will be taking feedback, um so this is co-administered or the the Utah cannabis laws are co-administered by the health department and the agriculture department. And the the health department will be working with the communities where these pharmacies are located. To gather that data and see if further protections are are needed, but. Um you we have limited uh pharmacies open so far, I think of the eight licenses granted, half of them, only four of them have opened. And I'm not aware of any major instances being um being brought to the public yet. Certainly we're tracking those as a city.
Well, I think I think the medical uses of of cannabis have been um. A positive thing, um I'm not against. Um medical use of of these products, um but I I would make a motion that we. Push this off to a further to a vote from tonight, I would love to see if we could get a little more, but check on how the other. Um you said there's four other four other dispensaries that have opened in the state. Um I'd like to see hear about how their communities have done with them, um and maybe look at some other states as well. And just get a little more background on that, if that's okay.
So um Morgan and uh Jake Mayer, if 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 you'd like, we can arrange to have. Uh the health department come and visit with you all, or maybe even have a public meeting where the health department officials are there from the state to talk about. Um kind of how this has been rolled out and um what they've found that uh positive and negative um impacts. That they've seen so far, but again, most of this is fairly new. Um you you're only dealing right now with the CBD production facility, you don't even have um uh a cannabis facility in your city, it's just. The adoption of these ordinances is being done pretty broadly by cities across the state in the in anticipation of. At least the production facilities um increasing, the state's going to keep it pretty tight lid on on pharmacies and. They may grant a few more licenses, but it it won't grow very quickly over the next couple of years. But production facilities where they they, you know, they mix the gummies and they mix the the edibles and other things, those are allowed. Um those are allowed anywhere they can get um zoning with the city, there's 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 not a limitation on licenses. Like there is for the cultivation and for the distribution of medical cannabis.
Christie, did you have additional comments on that?
No, I I appreciate that Jeff, and I think it'd be great if we could have, do you say the county health department, if they want to come and do a presentation, I think it'd be great for. Um not only myself, but I think for the citizens to understand. When we do make a decision either way.
Yeah, just to clarify, I'm sorry, just to clarify, that'd be the state health department, they're they they are uh they have jurisdictional oversight of um of all the uh the pharmacies.
Yeah, that would be great, um I've had been in a few discussions with some residents about this issue and um. There's a lot of, I think people are pretty open, but can see. See a decision going either way, and so I I would like to have some more information, so however we could set that up.
And I think one of the main things that we need to look at in staff, something that we can put together for the council is are these things. There was a serious vetting process that went throughout the state, after the vote happened and before the vote happened. They went through tons of studies to determine how to hone in on what they wanted within the state. So the resources available, if you look at the link that's attached to this ordinance in specific, you can see some of the rigorous. Um kind of how we were putting it into our city, we wanted to kind of make sure that we were vetting it appropriately, putting in those protections, because as you're saying this. We would and where you said, would it go into other retail parts of the city? And what Morgan was saying is it would be better to start in the FOI district where it was kind of a pilot area. Because those are the unknowns, but if you look at the rigorous vetting process that the state went through. I think you'll find that it's pretty satisfactory, and then the additional things that we added just for personal preference, things like you don't want to smell it outside of the store or things like that. If you visit them in other sites in the states in um like Colorado, California, Florida, Washington, even some places in Michigan. You'll notice that only certain places with those restrictions don't have an emitting smell that comes from them. So it's definitely something that we wanted to add, but I think if you look through that, you'll find the same information um that the public health. Um the state public health um department um went through and vetted, so that's something that I think initially. We should send out there, and then we can determine how we want to distribute the information once that once that's once that's been processed. As we are in a public hearing right now, and it'll, we can continue it to the next meeting, we can um have those conversations at the next meeting. M- Morgan, Jake, do you have any comments on that?
That's great, yeah, we're happy to to um work with Jeff to set up something with the state health department, uh I think that's a great idea. In the meantime, from a staff end, we can do some some research, um I'm gonna try to research just the the pharmacist, the medical cannabis pharmacies. Because I think the recreational dispensaries, um and this is just the hunch, are going to have different impacts than 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 you know someone with a prescription uh from a doctor. So we'll we'll try to we'll try to research that that specific use um and uh and get with the the health department, see if we can set something up for the next meeting.
Tyson, John, are you okay withholding this off to the next meeting, or did you want to make a vote tonight?
I'm good.
Yeah, I'm I'm comfortable, I mean, I I'm comfortable making a vote simply because where we're locating it to me is absolutely acceptable. Um and I'm very much in favor of this medical option for for people and. If we can put it closer to our residents um for their purposes, anyone who's been through anything health related. Um you know, that deals with where this can be of help, um they they get it, they understand how important this can be. If it's done right, and it seems like I I've been to some of these meetings with this and I'm I'm very much in favor of it. I could vote for it now and I can also wait and learn more and vote for it in a few weeks.
Okay. Okay, great, and Tice, you mentioned that you'd be um you'd welcome continuing it?
Yes.
Okay, alright, Christie, we'll go ahead and do that and we'll get that information put together and have that ready at the next meeting. Since we're continuing it, we need a specific date for our next meeting uh within the motion.
It's October fourteenth is your next meeting.
So I move that we continue this, um we leave the, we're gonna leave the public hearing open?
I believe we already closed it, and we don't need to reopen it because we held it, but we can provide information then.
So I'm going to continue this item on our meeting on October fourteenth.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Pam, I don't need a roll call because it's just to continue it, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that is the last item on our agenda, we would like to go into a closed session, um I believe for item A as well as.
Hmm, you can't do both, can't do both. I don't know if you can do both in this, David, is David Church still on? Because I have to record the one and not the other one.
You can record them both, though.
Well, not supposed to.
Just record them both.
You okay with that, is David not on, is he leave?
I don't see it.
Okay.
Should we have it recorded, Jake, or should we?
It's it for what we're talking about, it's okay that they're recorded, because Pam's gonna keep the recording closed anyways, it'd just be available for a grammar request.
It'd have to be a subpoena.
It won't be harmful in this situation.
It would have to be a subpoena for it to be released.
Right.
So if that's.
Well, I will need a motion to do that and then do and then we can adjourn, and then we will switch links to another Zoom meeting.
You need a motion to go into.
Thank you everybody for coming tonight. Say that again?
Need a mo- a motion for both at the same time?
Yes. You have to state them specifically. And that'll be a roll call.
So I make a motion that we go into a closed session for, what were the reasons you said?
A, discussion of the character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual. D, strategy strategy session to discuss the purchase, exchange, or lease of real property.
I think it's E, isn't it? I have it listed as E.
I don't know, I guess we could do E. Strategy sessions to discuss the sale of real property, including any form of water rights or shares, it looked more like D to me, but whatever you guys you guys make the call.
It's just for the purchase or sale of real property.
Yeah, so it's E.
I don't think it matters what letter it is.
Scratch D, you can do E because it's highlighted.
So we're doing A and E?
Yep, and I read both of them.
Okay, stated by Mayor Fulmer, I also move that we end tonight's meeting.
And you need to state that the meeting will be immediately following this one?
And then the meeting will be immediately following this one.
Okay, and then the adjournment can be separate.
Okay, can I get a second?
Se- second, yes.
Seconded by Tice, all in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, roll call please.
Oh, roll call, Christie?
Aye.
Tice?
Yea.
John?
Yea.
Chris is excused and yea, okay, that carried, Christie, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Tice? Oh, John, okay, hey, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great, Jake, where are you sending the additional link?
I already emailed it.
Okay, hold on while I shut everything off, please.
It was emailed, okay.
Can you save the chat for me, Pam?
Yep. And the stream.
Me, I'm gonna close, I'm leaving this one.
Alright, I'm ending the meeting, thanks.